When she shows up.
All right, welcome everyone. I call the March 2nd, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session on parking reductions near frequent transit code amendments. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. As with our previous meetings, the commissioners and staff will be participating via Zoom. During the Zoom meeting, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, public comment will be allowed both orally and in writing. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City Website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff by 3:00 PM today or to provide to notify staff or to provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. The video of this meeting is streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the audience comment portion of the meeting. An email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of our commissioners. Beginning. My position number, Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Westerbeck.
Here.
Commissioner Curd.
Present.
Commissioner Robson is not yet with her, us though we expect her shortly. Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
And did I skip over Commissioner Westerbeck?
No, I was second.
Ah, okay, kind of jumping around here. All right. In addition, Community Development Director Michael Cotterman and Senior Planner Dave Boyd are in attendance as well as Mike Stanger of Arch. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be asked, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up a yellow card or using the raise hand function. I will call on you as I see, and this will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second emotion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. Keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. This time is for items, items not on the agenda. Director Cotterman, please let us know if there are any comments received.
We did not receive any comments prior to the meeting, Mr. Chair, and I have no one in the attendee room at this time. I don't know if Senior Planner Boyd received any comments on his particular agenda item this evening.
I did not.
All right, that being the case, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Moving on to the next item, approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of February 16th meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Don't be shy. Commissioner Dodd.
I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I will second.
All right, Commissioner Westerbeck has second, Commissioner Dodd's motion to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Seeing no indication of anyone wishing to speak to that, all in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. And looking across the screen, I see all five commissioners present indicating they they approve the minutes as submitted. Next agenda item is new business. Director Cotterman, do we have any new business before us?
I have no new business for the commission this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Then we will move to our next item, moving right along this evening. Study session. Now, this is a study session on parking restrictions, reductions near frequent transit code amendments. And I believe Senior Planner Boyd will take the lead on this one.
Thank you and good evening, Chair and planning commissioners. I will launch into, I'll share my screen and launch into a presentation here shortly. But I also did want to acknowledge Mike Stanger, who's been working with me on on these amendments, particularly on the the affordable housing provisions in the amendments. Okay. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So, purpose tonight again is to continue the discussion on expanded provisions for reduced park, parking requirements near transit. We started off with a direction from City Council to extend the provisions for market rate housing from a half mile, from a quarter mile to a half mile near frequent transit with an analysis of affordable housing opportunities. We're also considering additional reductions in some cases as justified by a parking study. And and the affordable housing provisions, the memo did include some additional analysis from Arch. We've been talking about it in pretty general terms to date, but but the Mike Stanger did summarize his analysis to date in the memo. So that's one item that we do want to have some discussion on tonight. And so ultimately, we would like you to review where we are at this point and provide direction on the proposed approaches presented in the memo and that I'm going to cover in the presentation. First though, I'm just going to go back and kind of quickly review where we've been and for the, any viewing audience that hasn't been following along and and just for the commissioners. So we started, the Baltimore municipal code has had provisions for transit related, related parking reductions that date back to the 90s. And then in 2020, we adopted some state mandated reductions for parking near frequent, frequent transit. And the state definition of frequent transit was significantly higher than than what was allowed in the code at that point. And Planning Commission at that point did recommend extending the the market rate reductions from the quarter mile mandated by the state to a half mile. But council chose to keep it at a quarter mile to give us an opportunity to study affordable housing options with that extension beyond the state mandate. Other background includes the, we have already reduced parking requirements in both downtown and Canyon Park plans where transit and other issues were factored in to to create new parking requirements, reduced parking requirements in those two areas. Initially, those reductions were just for the central downtown districts, downtown core, downtown neighborhood and downtown transition. So the the red, brown, and orange areas on on the map to the left. They were later amended and actually raised to a minimum of one space per unit in those central districts. And then and then after that were amended to have some reduced parking, a little bit higher parking level for the corridor districts that are in in lilac and purple and green crosshatched purple on the map. In Canyon Park, we set a precedent for affordability provisions based on parking reductions. And then we since have applied that approach in the GDC overlay along primarily along Beardsley Avenue in the northwest part of downtown. So up until that time, we have really only been applying affordability provisions where we have increased capacity by reducing or removing density requirements or increasing height. So some of the issues that we've discussed and gotten good direction on to date was whether to consider proposed future transit, particularly the sound transit, bus rapid transit that is coming along 522 and 405 and a potential expansion of the Swift Green Line with will be possible with the expansion additional lanes on Bothell Way between downtown and Canyon Park. So we do have received strong support for that. We still, to be determined are exactly what the criteria for that are. But I wanted to raise one other possibility tonight, and that would be to also consider areas where we would like to get better transit. So for example, as we move the the green star there is a likely stop for the Swift Extended Green Line. But there are other activity centers within Bothell, Nike Hill, North Creek, and Brickyard Road in particular that will be either could be receiving additional transit as densities in those neighborhoods expand. So rather than just being reactive to where transit is being planned, we could apply these reductions in in areas where we want to induce better transit service. Another issue that we've covered and I think got received pretty clear direction from the commission is is the possibility of having, requiring a parking study for further reductions, which has already been established with the state mandated reductions for affordable housing. And there we allowed reductions to one space per bedroom for, without a parking study, but then to 0.75 per unit with a parking study. So using that as a, as a model we've discussed, and I think we've got relatively solid support for a tiered system and and we'll get into that further in the discussion of approaches. One of the, one area of feedback was there was concern about the cost. And yes, of doing a parking study initially and potentially of having to have a third-party review. So the, I guess the the support has been conditional on making that as as simple as possible and having some very clear criteria for the, for a parking study that wouldn't necessarily require the, using expensive consultants. Another issue that has been allowing reductions beyond those already reduced parking levels in downtown and Canyon Park, again with most likely with a parking study to justify it. As I said before, transit and parking reduction, reductions are already factored in, but we have had requests for further reductions and additional reductions could be a leverage for including affordable housing in downtown and 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 additional affordable housing in in Canyon Park without increasing building heights. So another issue would be should we consider projects beyond the half-mile walk shed? And we have had some discussion, and I think we've got some support for moving from a, just a simple radius to a walking distance. But a couple of projects have come up raising an issue of whether whether there could be justification for reductions beyond that half-mile walking distance. Again, with a parking study. We have one application for a rezone and parking reduction just outside the half-mile distance from the Canyon Park Swift Terminal. And we have another application for parking reductions. It's just outside the the half-mile radius from the Beardsley and 195th stop, proposed stop for the BRT line. So that's, those are issues that we're we're still looking into further. We've talked about reductions beyond multifamily housing as we have already established with corner lot duplexes and applying them potentially to single family with ADOs near frequent transit and other small multiplexes. And here's where we get into an area where there's some overlap with the the middle housing discussion, excuse me. So I want to really focus the discussion tonight on the approaches that I included in the memo and and I've kind of added one, one additional one here in the presentation for you to consider. So first of all, affordability requirements. So where the reduction results in a benefit for the developer through reduced cost, we have in recent amendments use that as a justification for affordable housing requirements and and our proposal would be to continue that with that approach. The analysis that was in the memo and and Mike Stanger is here to to answer questions about that, but it really only it it kind of splits the benefit between the the developer and that's getting a reduced cost and the and the public that is getting affordable housing in a, in roughly 50/50 fashion. And it it also doesn't take into account any additional capacity that the reduced parking requirement provides. It's really just based on the reduced cost of that parking. Calculating in the capacity because is a makes it quite a, quite a bit more complicated. It's and it varies from site to site. So it's it's difficult to 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 do that. And where we've done this before in Canyon Park and and in the GDC Affordable Housing Overlay, we've really relied on other measures that that potentially add capacity and just calculated the the reduced parking cost into those those affordable housing requirements. We've had some discussion both here and at the, in the middle housing study sessions about what the threshold should be. Currently, we, when we started with affordable housing requirements, we set the limit at five units or more. And that was to some degree based on what was then the the threshold for short plats. There's, there's nothing magical about that or nothing that says they have to be tied to short plats, but that was one rationale for that. The bigger rationale is is to exempt smaller projects that that are on tighter profit margins and and apply these primarily to larger developments. There's a practical side of that as well that if you're applying a requirement of five or 10% of the units to be affordable to developments that are less than 10 or even 20 units, then you're getting into fractional requirements, which in all likelihood would result in a, in a payment, a fee in lieu. That's not necessarily a bad thing. That fee in lieu can go into towards subsidized housing. But we're not necessarily getting those units from that development. So there's something to be said for looking at at larger developments potentially. So we would like tonight some feedback on the analysis in the memo. And then the other major point is on the concept or the approach of having tiers as we've established for with the state mandated reductions for affordable housing. We allow one level of a reduction by right and then further reductions as justified by a parking study. So that's consistent with with that approach that we established there in 2020. It provides developers with some flexibility and allows them some reduction without a parking study. And and as I said before, we would develop simple criteria, criteria to reduce cost and enable use of tools like the the King County Right Size Parking Calculator to to apply that. There's still more work to be done on that. So the details of that we're, we're, we'll have to bring out back to at a further future study session or hearing. And then related to that, and it would be applying this tiered approach to the downtown and Canyon Park with a, with a parking study. This would need to be coordinated with the work going on in Canyon Park regarding transfer development rights and bonus FARs. And and then additional reductions in downtown, as I stated before, would be leverage for additional affordable housing downtown. Another approach that we, that I introduced at the last study session was to consider reducing the central downtown parking requirements to their previous level of 0.75 per bedroom with a maximum of 2.2 per unit. And or a similar graded scale. Our recommendation at this point would be to if this is a direction the Planning Commission would like to go to, just go back to that earlier requirement and leave any fine tuning and introduction of a graded scale to future parking study as, and we've already discussed that one of the findings for these recommendations would be a recommendation to move forward with additional parking study, both downtown and and citywide to look at the parking levels, parking requirements. So the the earlier studies we did, and I didn't include them in the packet because on on second look, the 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 analysis that was done in in those studies is already somewhat dated, but in general terms, it supported the the 0.75 per bedroom by, through the the fairly limited parking utilization study, they were able to do. There are only three projects that were occupied at that point. And and the general trend towards lower car ownership in particularly in urban areas. So further changes beyond just going back to what what we had previously before the one space per unit minimum was was set would require additional study. And then there's been a fair amount of talk about parking management. And and I think we've concluded that that would be something that would be included in a finding along with finding supporting additional parking studies of further reductions. But one thing that we, we might want to consider, and I don't have a particular proposal, but I wanted to gauge support for this is where we do allow reductions with a parking study requiring a parking management plan from the developer and and one that would potentially one that would give us some ongoing information about parking utilization on on some of these developments. We've done that in some of our downtown projects. We added a requirement in our, in our standards that any development that included compact parking stalls would have to submit a parking management plan and the guidelines for that call for annual updates so that we can track parking utilization and and what what the different developments are charging for parking to use in in future parking studies. And I think this is the last or second to last approach before I break and and open it up for some clarification, questions and and then any and deliberations if there's no public comment is adding reductions for middle housing options near frequent transit and trails similar to those adopted for corner lot duplexes. So this could apply to ADUs near frequent transit, the other small multiplexes and and would be done in coordination with the middle housing amendments. And then one other that it would have to do with looking at the, those parking reductions that date back to the 90s and making some tweaks to those for clarity and consistency while maintaining the existing options for parking reductions. But seeing if they're, how how we could make those fit more seamlessly with with the newer parking reductions. And again, these could apply to the, those two code requests for parking reductions that that do lie outside that half-mile radius. So just in summary, these are all the the items that we would like some direction on in terms of affordability, the basing those on the cost of savings of the reduced parking requirement and any thoughts on adding into that equation capacity. But as I said, that that makes it significantly more complex analysis. And then any further thoughts on on the threshold for affordability requirements? On tiers, again, I don't have specific language for you to to react to, but the basic approach of a base reduction with additional reductions available with a study and affordability provisions. And to allow reductions in downtown and Canyon Park with additional affordability. In downtown, the possibility of returning to the 0.75 per bedroom in the central downtown districts. Parking management, like to get thoughts on requiring a parking, parking management plan when, for projects that do apply for deeper reductions with a, through a parking study. And and middle housing, just I think we've, we've gotten good feedback on on the need to coordinate the reductions with what we're doing in middle housing. But any other thoughts on that? And also on coordinating, integrating, and simplifying the overall parking reductions code amendments together with the reductions that date back to the 90s. So with that, I'd like to open it up. So with that, I'd like to open it up for clarifying. Questions, after which we can take any public comment if anyone has signed on. In uh since we started the presentation and move on to discussion and direction. And I'll just um quickly, we'll get to this again at the end, but um. We're thinking that the next uh meeting uh could be on April sixth as uh it was uh written in the memo. Or uh we could push that back to April twentieth to do that along with uh the middle housing uh discussion that. We anticipate is uh will that we are gonna be having on uh March sixteenth and we anticipate continuing to April twentieth. So with that, any clarifying questions?
All right, thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. Uh before we dive in, I see Commissioner Gustafson. Uh I do want to recognize that Commissioner Robson joined us during the presentation, so we are all here uh for the record. Uh so Commissioner Gustafson, I believe you had your hand up.
I thank you, Chair Keonian, Sarah Gustafson here. I was very excited to see the. Shared benefit analysis that showed how um. A developer could reduce their parking and provide affordable housing and come out ahead because the savings. The developer would get from. Not doing the parking requirement um would more than make up for. The affordable housing provided, so that's really exciting. And it seems like a win-win, but my question for Mr. Stanger is. This great idea, um what are some examples of you that you might have seen it working in other cities and what are? Some ideas or tips that might help us think about how it could work in in Bothell? Is it too good to be true?
Uh well, good evening, Mike Stanger uh with Arch and uh it's good to be with you again um. This to to be frank, uh we haven't. I haven't seen, excuse me, I had gum surgery yesterday, so my mouth might be a little or voice might sound a little fuzzy. We haven't tried uh just a parking reduction um. With affordable housing um in isolation like this, we've it's only been done. Uh really in combination with upzoning and other um. Developer benefits and. Uh really Bothell is the first one of our cities that uh has made a concerted effort of this kind, so. So it's, you know, it's it's a bit, I guess you could call it groundbreaking. Uh it's something that we're we're trying to gain some uh recognition. Uh you know of of it as um it's a real opportunity for um. Uh helping to. I guess I hesitate to use the word incentivize because I don't wanna. You know, because we're talking about something that would be mandatory, but as a as a as a way of leveraging. Financial support for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Other commissioners?
If I can uh just add to that a little bit, um so we we haven't had any actual projects built yet, but we have had developers that have come. To us and said. I'd like to develop this this property, um but the parking requirement is uh is. Onerous and other jurisdictions allow um allow parking reductions with. Uh with a parking study, um do you allow that and and currently we don't? Uh and but we do talk, we have been at least in recent uh years uh countering with. Would you uh would you be uh? If if we were to reduce the parking along with uh some affordable housing uh incentive, you know, requirement. Uh would that work for you and frankly, they some have been uh very amenable to that, others have not. Uh but I think there there are certainly uh developers out there that will. Uh that would take advantage of that and and would be willing to provide the affordable housing for that flexibility.
All right, thank you. So other commissioners? So I I had a couple of notes when I went through the materials. And you briefly alluded to actually two of my questions, so I would. One question was, what do we know about the current utilization utilization of the built parking? And I heard you say that at least a few of the developments do have a. Parking management plan requirement which would give us data on that, is that correct?
The main data we have is from the the phase one parking study that was done back in two thousand and seventeen, I believe um. And it was based on uh the three projects that were. Uh occupied at that point, which were the one oh four uh Six Oaks and um. Uh what is now known as the Villas at Beardsley um Crossing and the. The parking utilization that they um uh determined and they didn't just look at what was. Uh where people or how many people were parking in the garages, they knew that there was uh some spillover parking. Uh so they they also did counts, uh middle of the night counts. Uh in uh on the streets adjacent to those and even in. Uh the library parking lot and uh city hall parking garage to to get a a handle on. On what the actual parking uh uh generated by those projects what uh was. And it came out to an average of about point eight four spaces per unit. And uh those projects are, there there is a mix of uh two bedrooms. Units, maybe a very small number of three bedroom units, but they're predominantly studios and one bedrooms, so. Um the the conclusion of our consultant was. Those those numbers uh coupled with the the trends in in car ownership uh made them feel that. They would have been very comfortable uh recommending uh that we stick at uh stay at point seven five per bedroom. The political climate at that point, the the there was, we knew that there was a um. A feeling that 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 wasn't enough, uh so we actually um taking that into concerted consideration um. Made some recommendations that uh started above the 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 point eight four uh uh, so I think we started at point nine. Uh for studios and one bedrooms and uh one point six for two bedrooms, uh but um. I think that would. That calculus might be a little bit different uh today.
And have subsequent uh developments been required to do a similar parking management plan or just those three?
Uh subsequent developments have been uh required, but it's 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 a. It's an unusual uh requirement, uh given that it comes uh through the the parking standards. And so we haven't uh. Uh we haven't really been uh consistent in in getting those parking management plans and certainly not in getting. Uh annual updates, uh which was the original uh idea. Uh so that would be something we we would need to address in a in a broader parking management plan.
And it seems like important data. Other commissioners? So I've got a couple more. All right, seeing none, uh do we have a sense for what the cost to the residents of parking is, even just a range?
We did get that, that was part of what we asked uh for in those parking management plans, and at the time it was a range uh. Uh some developers, uh some projects had a a fee of. Around, I believe, a hundred and fifty dollars a space for a reserved space, a hundred dollars a space for a um. There were there were three levels, at least at uh one of the developments um uh. And it it went down to a uh I think as low as around fifty dollars a month for a space that was shared with. One of the commercial tenants, uh so for if you were. Willing to to uh vacate your space uh during business hours um. While you were at work, uh for example, you could get a a better rate. Uh I've heard uh more recent estimates that um. Parking spaces are are uh going for uh two twenty-five was a recent uh um number that I heard. Uh tossed out, varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, but we we don't have current uh good current data for Bothell.
Thanks, seems like that would be useful. Okay, other commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson.
Thank you, Chair Keonian, Sarah Gustafson here, I would like to ask one follow-up question on the. Previous discussion on the um, how would I call it? The affordable housing requirements based on parking reductions, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Westerback for his opinion. I wanted to see if. That three hundred thousand dollars a unit, if it's converted to affordable housing. Of lost value seems about right and if. I guess this the number crunching seems to make sense to you, and if you, when you built your. Buildings had this opportunity, would you have jumped on it?
Yeah, and actually I was trying to understand that three hundred thousand present value of income lost, how that's calculated, I honestly don't understand that. What, so I might need some clarification on that, but I can tell you that um. I deal with this a lot for other projects too and um. Parking accounts for this forty thousand dollars per like structured spot is is right on, in fact, it's fifty to sixty thousand in some cases now. Uh and so um yeah, um I I actually had a conversation a few years ago with with Director Carterman, I think he was pretty new at the time. I'd shown him a a tower of apartments, hardly a tower, I think it's seven, eight stories on um. Capitol Hill in Seattle called the Capitol Core, that's seventeen units on a site that's the same size as my site where I ended up building four. And I said I could build seventeen, uh you know, he couldn't, of course, let me do that without the parking. So ended up with four, but this place has seventeen units with no parking on a twenty-six hundred square foot site. And so um not only would they, but I've done at least. Six, eight, maybe even twelve more units uh without the parking requirement, but um. Probably could have uh rented them for a more like a micro apartment rate like we're seeing over by the U dot Bothell. Because you get a lot more units per chunk of land, but but um so. So all the developers I know, uh parking is an enormous uh line item on the on the budget, so you will get a lot more housing. If you reduce parking requirements, it's just the way it is um and you know. Most of us live in something built by developer or work in something built by developer, so someone's got to build the housing. And uh we want more units right now, not fewer, so hope I didn't digress too much, but um. This is very accurate, I mean um. I was looking at a really big project the other day um. That would take something like three hundred parking spots, you have to dig down one level, and it's probably ten to twelve million dollars uh to 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 do that. And you could build the buildings above for, you know, twenty to thirty million, so we're talking a full. Twenty-five, thirty percent reduction in cost of the project. Significant.
Mike Stanger, would you take a stab at explaining the three hundred thousand figure?
Sure, uh it's not a super complicated uh calculation, but it it it. The concept can be hard to grasp at first and probably not for Kerry, but um. It the three hundred thousand represents the rent gap or a weighted average rent gap of um. Affordable units throughout a project, and by rent gap, I mean the difference between the market rent and the affordable rent. Um and as I think is mentioned in the in the memo, the the averages that I was using was. Uh twenty-one hundred dollars for a um. Um the market rate unit and eleven hundred dollars for the. Affordable unit, so we just take that uh difference there and um. Multiply it by the uh or sorry um divided by the cap rate. Uh which usually is used as a measure of um. You know, what a person would be, a buyer would be willing to pay to purchase a unit based on the the cash flow that they anticipate. Uh for the uh life of a project. In this case, we're kind of reversing that concept um because it's a it's negative income. Um but it's the same, it works the same way um. So um we thought that uh and that that three hundred thousand that is kind of a. A middle figure that is. At various affordability levels that I looked at, um it's it's right around the fifty AMI level. Uh I'd be happy to share the the worksheet with uh with members if like me to pass that along.
That makes perfect sense now, once uh once I look at the weighted average you wrote there, so.
Okay.
Like basically just half, that makes perfect sense, thank you.
I think there was some interest in your worksheet.
Okay.
It's not, at least a couple of thumbs up. Maybe one commissioner, both of one commissioner's thumbs.
Okay, other commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Curd.
Thanks, this is Carsten, uh I wanted to um. Wait a second before getting too wonky, but um here we are. Uh I wanted to ask more about the Right Size Parking Calculator, because I've been doing some research on the variables that are employed. I was just wondering if you have any update or planning has any update around Snohomish County on such data? And if not, I have some suggestions.
Um I I would love to get your suggestions, I have not uh um got any uh direct. Uh information from Snohomish County, I've talked to the the authors or the the folks that that um. Worked on the King County Right Size Calculator calculator, asked if they had had uh. Had any inquiries from adjacent jurisdictions about uh expanding there, if they've they've done any work in that. In that regard, and they said they hadn't, but they did provide um. Uh some of the statistical or links to the statistical data that I've shared with our GIS uh group about. And to start getting an idea of uh how hard it would be for us to. Uh expand it into the Snohomish County portion of Bothell, that's a work in progress, I I don't have anything to report, but I I. Uh I'd love to follow up with you um offline to find out what uh what leads you found.
That's great, yeah, um I didn't assume that Snohomish County probably did anything like this before um. And some of the parameters for the calculator kind of tie into exactly what we're talking about now. Um and so like unbundled parking uh cost per stall per month. Um that was a parameter that was used in the calculator, and that's something that we're considering too, and so like for the King County um. Estimate, uh it was two hundred and forty-two dollars per month, and that was back in, you know, twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen, so um. I think that we'll need a lot of information and data, especially about um like rent and unit size, and so I'm just um. I don't have a lot to like talk about, but um those sorts of uh fine-grained data. Uh will be really important uh if the city of Bothell is looking at expanding or making a new tool like that.
Other commissioners? Oops, Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Chair Keenan. Just real briefly, wanted to follow up with Commissioner Gustafson. I'm not sure if I was real clear of my answer, but what I wanted to to make the point there was with my project, I actually wanted to do about twelve units instead of four. And the big loss was the opportunity cost of eight more units. So the city of Bothell were desperate need for housing. And I wanted to build more. And I think there are others like me who want to do that. But you literally can't make, you can't build a building if you can't bring in enough rent to at least make it survive and and cover its costs. So there's a, there's a break even, and then you have to go a little bit beyond that just to cover garbage. And even if you didn't want to make a profit, like a lot of nonprofit buildings, Mike knows all this stuff. So the more you put on a site, the better. So I could have housed eight more, eight more people, eight more families or whatever. In this case, it'd be small units, so probably one or two people, families. But so it's the opportunity cost that we that we are missing each time we ratchet up the parking. So just want to clarify that.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thanks, Chair. And thanks for the presentation. I wanted to add to what Commissioner Westerbeck said. I think what we don't talk about enough when we talk about parking is every time we require more parking, we are encouraging more driving. The easier it is to park, the more you're going to drive. When I had a condo and not anywhere near these well-serviced areas, but up by Burger Master in North Creek and then Incorporated Snohomish County, we had one parking spot and there was no guest parking that owners could use because they watched it like hawks. So I didn't drive very much. I walked all over. I bust all over, even with a small baby, and I made it work. When I rented a second parking spot, I started driving a lot more. And that's just a colloquial story, but there's so much discussion in our city, in our state, in the world about the harm that driving does. And I think it's it's going to be such a wasted opportunity if we can't even reduce parking significantly where we have, you know, frequent transit here. So I just, I want to make sure that, you know, sure, some people will make adjustments. Maybe some people who want to drive will choose not to live in these areas, but because they can't have the parking they want, but we have an opportunity to make a difference. And I really want to make sure that we leverage that. And we appreciate that the more we can encourage people to not drive, the better it is for the planet, right? But also just like the better it is for the traffic we already experience, like the more we can push people to other routes. There's so many benefits that don't go into just one person building a building. It benefits all of us in a lot of different ways. So I just, I wanted to sort of remind the commission of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd. Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. I was interested to hear the idea of I guess, private parking management. It sounds like there is some opportunity to devolve the responsibility for making sure that residents do not use the public commons onto the building management themselves. So my questions are, would this be potentially in lieu of or in addition to like city parking management? And part of the reason why I'm asking this is because I think enforcement is necessary, but I don't particularly want to put it as an additional scope of responsibility on the local police. I don't think that's appropriate. So I'm wondering, what are the other options and what are some pitfalls of those options as well?
I think that ideally would be both and that developers, particularly developers of larger projects, would have a parking management plan and and do some degree of managing their their own demand. And then ideally, when it comes to enforcement, we did actually explore some options for it when we were discussing potential parking enforcement, where private developments could contribute towards an overall enforcement. It could get fairly difficult, but but I think there's going to have, when we get to questions like enforcement, there's going to have to be the public involvement to some degree. But again, there could be some private, public-private partnership. But ultimately, when it gets to not only, you know, potentially giving out tickets, but then collecting on those, then then you're involving the court system. And so it does get complicated.
Director Cotterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add to what what Mr. Boyd just said, it's very, it's very difficult that I'm not aware of anywhere that police enforce private parking. Typically, police will not do that type of enforcement on private property. If they were to do that, it'd have to be through some type of an agreement. And as as Mr. Boyd pointed out, then it gets very complicated in terms of court cases and that type of thing, where I think it, getting back to your question of Commissioner Gustafson, I think what Dave said is it's it's and both. Or both and, however, our review said that, Dave. If we have, if we have an overall parking management program, say for downtown, that's dealing with the public parking, then that should be coordinated to the extent that we can with any private parking management programs that are also for those buildings that are downtown, so that they're not working at cross purposes. They're actually coordinated with each other. And if I could just add a couple of things to what some previous commissioners had said, or ask, maybe ask a couple of questions.
Please do.
So a question to Commissioner Westerbeck, when you talked about the twelve units. One of the things that always comes up is the financing and whether banks would actually finance a project that didn't have any parking associated with it. And I know that's less of an issue than it used to be, but I'd be curious to know in a place like Bothell, where banks don't necessarily view it in the same sense as a Capitol Hill or West Seattle or something like that, wouldn't even be possible to get financing for a project that didn't have some parking associated with it?
That's a really good question, and I read about that all the time. And it's hard to know until you start talking to them, but because there's such a demand for housing and this is wonky, but there's a lot of money looking for projects right now. There's more money than there are projects. It's weird to think about that. But this is weird boom time. So we're seeing a lot of relaxing, relaxing of that. And while banking is super conservative, what I'm hearing from others, and this is all over the country, is that, of course, like in Seattle, it's not an issue at all. We see tons of buildings going up with little or no parking because like you say, there's not a, it's not an issue there. They're getting plenty of money. But in these smaller cities like Bothell, medium-sized cities, it's loosening up now. So I am seeing people build lower parking required buildings or parking buildings with a lot less parking and getting financing pretty easily. So we are seeing a change there. But, you know, specifically I've come to try to finance a project. So I'm still curious. It's still something I'm concerned about. It's a really good point. But we're seeing relaxing of that.
Well, that's good to hear because I know that's something that as planners and other places that I've worked, you know, when we've tried to reduce parking, it became moot because the banks wouldn't finance the projects anyway. So that's what we were told often.
The cool thing, though, to keep in mind is, if I may, we can say it's reduced. I mean, in my opinion, we shouldn't have a requirement. But developers can choose to or not. We just shouldn't be mandating it. So they're going to, if you determine, I've got sixteen units and I want to have at least eight parking spots because at least half the people are going to want them. But I can't do twelve, but I can make eight work. Well, we should just have that option. And, you know, it's with between them and their bank. If they can get financing, great. If they can't, it's on them. We don't need to worry about that. That shouldn't be something the city worries about at all. That's not our domain. So we should just be hands up. Planners can take that off their plate and sleep better at night. Just don't worry about it. Let us worry about that.
We want to make sure that you can sleep better at night. No.
I don't want you to sleep better, not us. We're never, we're never going to sleep well, being developers.
And I understand that to Commissioner Westerbeck. My, my point was that when planners, in the past, when we have reduced parking, the reduction was moot because the 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 financial, you know, the lenders required the parking anyway. But that's, that's, that's a good trend, and I'm happy to hear that's happening.
That's one more reason the cities don't have to worry about it. Let the banks, you know, they're the, they're the gatekeepers at this point. So let them deal with it. Let the developers deal with it. We don't have to mandate it. So, you know, it's just one more thing we don't have to have in our code.
And then if I could just add one thing to what Commissioner Dodd had mentioned about transportation, I think that's a very good point. The other the other thing to keep in mind, transportation is the second largest proportion of household expenditure after housing. So, yeah, if we can provide those opportunities where people don't have to drive, they don't have to have a car, that also makes it more affordable. And getting back to the banks for a second, I know, I'm not sure how common this is, but a few years ago, I was reading an article where banks were starting to look at that as part of the qualifications for mortgages. If if a, if a housing unit, if someone was buying a house in an area that had that transit service and they didn't need an automobile, that that, you know, that cost was not counted against their household expenses. So that allowed them to qualify for for a little bit more housing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would just like to express my appreciation for your concern of my sleeping habits. So and I wanted to also give one other example that the the one oh four development is an interesting one. It was one, it was actually the first multifamily development done under the downtown plan. It's in the downtown neighborhood district, which they could have built at least one, if not two additional floors, but basically their calculus was the the site lent itself to one level of subterranean parking. It would have been very expensive to do a second level. So they basically built as much as they could, as our code allowed them to build for the amount of parking that they were able to build. So that's another thing where, you know, it's a hundred and fifteen units. They might have had thirty percent more or something on that of that magnitude. If they could have reduced the parking. And again, if we if we include a affordable housing requirement with the reduction, then perhaps we could have had, you know, thirteen or fifteen affordable units in that mix.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Curd, but I want to jump in following Commissioner Dodd and Director Cotterman's comments with a question. Director Cotterman, I know that in many cases employers provide transit subsidies, either subsidized or free passes. Are you aware of that being done anywhere in residential developments? So rather than providing parking, provide some discount on transit pass?
I can't cite a specific example, but I am aware that in velvet, if your example, I know that some of the some of the requirements or some of the allowances that were made for parking reductions or affordability was if there is a transportation demand management program as part of that development, which could include a bus pass, for example, an ORCA card, that that was one of the, one of the allowances that was made. And Mike Sanger said, maybe he has a specific example of a residential project where that was done.
I could probably mention a couple, but it's, I've seen that in Kirkland and Redmond as well.
Okay. Thank you. Because I know there's been a real push for employers to have transportation management plans, including emphasis on transit. And I just don't see any reason why that wouldn't be workable on a residential level as well. And then getting to Commissioner Dodd's point about just taking the bus more, particularly if the bus is a lot cheaper. So, okay.
It tends to be an issue of scale in that case, you know, if the development is large enough where they can, as if they have onsite property management, for example, is just part of their responsibilities than to manage that that program.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Mr. Curd, I jumped ahead of you.
No worries. Thank you. This is Carsten. I wanted to ask a question to Dave Boyd. So the one oh four on one hundred and fourth is a good option, or it's a good example to use in comparison to the Ross Road Apartments, which are currently under construction and have spent a lot of money on subterranean parking. In the absence of a lot of factors that may have changed, like affordability requirements and so forth, what's the difference between the two? Why are we getting more FAR out of Ross Road than we did out of the one oh four? Is it just comfortability with the downtown plan? Is it different market conditions? Different developers?
Yeah, well, definitely different, different developers, but I think that the product is pretty similar. It's three levels of apartments over one level of parking in both cases. One difference is that the Ross Road Apartments is maxing out their, their height envelope. They're in downtown transition with a three-floor height limit, whereas the one oh four could have gone higher, but they chose not to because they, and if they could have gone maybe two floors higher, adding another floor of parking might have penciled out, but it didn't really make sense to to add another level if they couldn't take full advantage of that.
I see. So it's really more about the where the iceberg floats. If it's heavy underground or if it's heavy above ground, it's going to work its way out.
And you're absolutely correct. The engineering to do subterranean parking on the Ross Road site was significantly more difficult than on the one oh four site.
Thank you.
All right, other commissioner questions for clarification before we move into providing specific feedback to Senior Planner Boyd.
I thought I saw Commissioner Gustafson's hand up earlier.
Hi, thank you, Director Cotterman. Sarah Gustafson here. Wanted to piggy, well, I wanted to expand Chair Keenan's great point about the subsidies for public transit. I don't know if any parking reductions would go with mandatory secure bike storage locations in the buildings.
In downtown, we are, we do have a pretty significant bike storage requirement for new development. And, you know, I'd have to double check. I believe that probably was done also in Canyon Park. So, and as part of our park, the parking management plan, there's certainly been discussions about with developers about providing subsidized bus passes. And I think some of them in Bothell do. I just don't know off the top of my head for sure on that.
So the bike parking triggered a question for me. Are any of these buildings pursuing a LEED or Green Building Certification, which bike parking typically is associated with as well, you know?
The Six Oaks Project did apply for, and I think we did give them a, the the green building parking reduction. And that was actually, and we were criticized for that in hindsight when people thought that we hadn't required enough parking for that particular project. So we, we've, that's, that's kind of an optional. The code says that we may provide that reduction. So we haven't done that since, since then, but it's certainly a tool that we, we have.
And we are looking at that for the Avalon Bay project.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one on the Seattle Times site, in case you're not familiar with the name.
Commissioner Dodd.
Well, now it's my turn to get wonky, I guess. I would love to see if, you know, if a study justifies it, maybe the option to swap some car parking for bike parking, secure bike parking. the option to swap some car parking for bike parking, secure bike parking, which is super important, um, especially I, I like my e-bike here in Bothell with all the hills, so I don't want to just park it in a rack for very long. Um, but I, uh, I think that would be amazing, or even a bus pass program. I realize I'm saying a lot of programs, that people who write municipal code are going to be like, dear God, why, how are we going to codify that? But, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's just a fascinating thought to see instead of providing parking, what if we provided, transportation support, you know, and then that, that's flexible for the project. But, um, I also, I'm really sad to hear that the, the green building parking reduction was criticized. I, I would wonder, and this is not really a question, but like by whom and, why, you know, like somebody got mad one day because they had to park further away. So they were like, oh, this is the worst. Like, I, it, I wonder how valid that criticism was. So I encourage you to continue that program because it seems like such a, such a great thing. So, thank you.
It's still on the books and, and we are, like, uh, Director Cotterman said, we are using it, uh, in, uh, for, for, uh, or at least we're, uh, discussing that, uh, being a, a strategy on another project. One of the criticisms was, um, that, just because a building has triple glazing and, uh, you know, super insulation, that doesn't mean that, the people living there are going to drive any less. So, um, so that, that was part of the, the criticism. But the, the real criticism was the, at least the perception, that, uh, there wasn't enough parking, uh, for the, the number of apartments in that building.
I'll reserve my further comments on that, but thank you for clarifying.
All right. Other commissioner questions or clarifying comments? Shall we then move, uh, Dave to your, uh, where you're seeking more specific, uh, input?
Yes, uh, and, um, I, I could put them on the screen. I've got them on my screen, uh, so I could just go through the questions, uh, um, I'll defer to, to you on that one. And I think we can go through these fairly quick because I, I think just in the discussion we've had to date, we've got pretty good, a pretty good sense of, of where the commission is. Um, so I'll just start with the affordability issue. Uh, and I guess the basic question is, uh, we have heard that, uh, at least one commissioner, uh, was, um, very enthusiastic, got enthusiastic about getting the, the worksheet, that, uh, was behind the summary, uh, that, that Mike Stanger provided in the, in the memo. Uh, and we can do that for the next, uh, session, but, uh, is there, basic support for this approach of, of, um, uh, of, using the reduction in cost, uh, to, uh, determine the, an affordability requirement of?
Okay, I'm looking. I see, nodding heads, general consensus. One other thing you had in that item was a question about, considering added capacity. And I am inclined to share your concern about that complicating things. Um, you, you know, it'd be great if you could get a, quick and easy idea of how much capacity and the value of the capacity and then share that value. I'm skeptical that that's something that could be done and it seems, as you said, very individual. So, um, I'm, my, if anything, I would push, you know, instead of 50/50, maybe 55, 45, but, um, I, I, I think the capacity question is, the complexity outweighs potential benefit. And I wonder if any of the other commissioners want to weigh in on that? Seeing none, I guess we'll consider that question. Commissioner Westerback.
I, I'm actually a little confused. Are we talking about the, the tiered system?
Not yet.
Not yet. That's further down, right? So, cause I, I do, um, I know I read this a couple of times. I tend to agree with you, Chair Keenan, um, and, uh, because there was some of it, I was actually having to read two or three times to make sure I understood it. So if that's part of that, part of that, then I agree with you. That simp- simple is probably better in this case. Um, so anyway, that was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. So, enough feedback on that one?
And the other one, uh, related to affordability was the, the, the threshold, uh, stick, stick with five units or more, uh, or do some analysis of, uh, of raising that. We already had a discuss, I think we had consensus in the middle housing, uh, uh, discussion that if, that we should at least consider going up to six, uh, if not, um, uh, higher, but, uh, any, any further thoughts on that? Commissioner Gustafson, as we're ending up?
Um, yes, Sarah Gustafson. Thanks for the question, Senior Planner Board. I'm not sure I'm going to give you an answer. Instead, I have another question. So if, I'm, I'm having some trouble trying to figure out how the affordability, incentive would work if the state decided to all of a sudden reduce parking, minimums across the board anyway. Where would that leave this incentive program of ours?
Well, the, the, our approach has been, uh, to analyze, uh, affordable housing, uh, um, requirements based on, uh, these, this cost benefit analysis at the time of, that we make our code changes. In the future, if something else happens that to, uh, I, I, it's justifiable as long as it's, it, uh, it, it provides a benefit at the time that we make that. And, and the other, it, the converse is true as well. Um, because we raised the, the requirement in downtown from, um, a minimum of, point seven five per bedroom to a minimum of one per unit. Um, we can't, uh, we can't, uh, um, require an affordability, uh, requirement, um, for going back to what, what it was, uh, in, in relatively recent, uh, history. So, um, we can't really, predict or, um, or, uh, uh, base this on, on what might happen in the future, but, but our, our, uh, threshold is we need to show that we're, we're actually providing a benefit, that there is a nexus between the, the changes that we're making and, and, and the existing, uh, conditions.
So, if, just to, to piggyback on that a little bit, I, I could envision a couple of scenarios, um, from what you're describing, Commissioner Gustafson. So let's say we have, let's say we put something in place that has a requirement based on a, a parking reduction, that has a, an affordability requirement based on a parking reduction. And then the state comes in and as the scenario you're describing, and they, they lower that parking level, or eliminate it entirely, but it's less than what we are, are requiring. And then we're required to reduce that even more. Um, in an ideal situation, we would simply be able to change the calculation for the affordability to go along with that reduction. I don't know that that would be possible, since it would be a state requirement. So that's something we, it would depend on how the legislation is written, but I would say in, for lack of a better phrase, in a worst case scenario, I, I, I would agree with what, um, what Senior Planner Boyd just said is, I don't think it would change our ability to do that affordability for what we had already done. So I think we'd be able to retain that, again, depending on how the legislation is written. But the, in the legislative scenarios I'm envisioning, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure we'd be able to at least retain that level of affordability, even if we couldn't get any more for the, the additional reduction. I hope that helps.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Uh, thank you. Sarah Gustafson here. Yes, I think the thing that triggered that question is because I know legislation has a, a rios about, fourplexes or sixplexes having the lower requirements by right. Um, but Senior Planner, we would be saying that, fourplexes or fiveplexes would have the parking reduced by right, and they wouldn't even have to provide the affordable housing? I'm trying to understand the threshold, really.
Well, that's exactly right. So basically, um, we wouldn't, the, the, the basic approach is that, uh, those middle housing options are going, are, are going to be, uh, naturally affordable housing, uh, naturally occurring affordable housing. Um, and, uh, because of, the reduced size, because you're doing four units in the same, essentially the same, or close to the same envelope as a single family house, uh, they will be, uh, smaller and, 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 and therefore they'll, they'll be more affordable. And, um, and like, like I said, that applying, uh, 10% affordability requirement to a, a, a project of, you know, five units or less, uh, is, um, yes. You, and it's not necessarily a bad thing that you get, uh, half a unit worth of, uh, fee and loo, instead of a, an actual unit. Um, but, um, there's, there's, a certain logic to, um, to having your threshold, uh, uh, be higher. And also, uh, that we set a precedent for, um, sort of giving favorable treatment to, uh, smaller developments with our public space requirement downtown. We recognize that those, those, uh, small infill developments, um, have smaller profit market margins and, and, uh, um, and so that we can, we can be more equitable by, um, uh, placing these requirements, uh, more on, on the larger developments.
One of the questions that came up from the commission, uh, or maybe it was at the council discussion on the docket, I forget now, but what was, um, you know, if we allow for this type of housing, will it actually be built? And that's one of the questions that Dave is going to be posing to our DSA group, um, later this month. And I think part of that question could be, you know, if we do raise that, um, that threshold, would that be, you know, would that make it more appealing to do this type of middle housing? Because that could be a sort of a, a, a little bit of an incentive then, if they knew that they weren't going to have to provide that affordability, because they are typically smaller scale type, developments, you know, by the same token, if they're doing an entire subdivision, and several of those are fourplexes, then maybe we do want some of that affordability as well. So it depends on how we count the units. But I think, uh, Dave, I think that's, you know, we figure out how to, how to pose that question to, uh, to the DSA group. I think that'd be good feedback.
And we will be, uh, meeting with that group on March 24th. So we'll get that, that, uh, feedback for the, uh, April session on, on middle housing and parking.
Okay. Commissioner Westerback. You might be frozen.
Uh, did you call me? Cause I lost my internet for a second.
Yeah, you were frozen. Your hand is up, uh.
Sorry about that. I have a real quick, um, uh, thing I want to verify, Dave. Again, because I was having some internet troubles earlier too, and I missed it. Did you say in the 2017 study that, uh, they determined it was point four units, point four spots per unit that were being used?
Uh, no, point eight four.
Point eight four. See, that's, that was the problem with my internet. There we go. Okay. Now that helps. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I wanted to clarify.
He wanted it to be point four.
So other, other commissioners? Commissioner Kirk.
Thanks. Um, I, uh, want to just, going to state my opinion around the affordability requirements. I'm, uh, maybe in the minority opinion here, but, I don't know if, uh, making affordability contingent on reduction in parking, uh, is, uh, or making reductions in, uh, minimum parking contingent on affordable housing, um, is the best approach. I've, one of the guiding, um, kind of principles that I'm working, on, uh, is trying to, um, maximize, uh, usage of space for people rather than cars on lots. Um, and this basically means minimizing, um, our currently high, uh, parking requirements, um, across the board. And so I, I like the idea of tying this to affordability and I understand why we're looking at this because it's mandated by council. But I want to see, um, I want to see it sort of, uh, happen in, in, in any circumstance and maybe pursuing, uh, deeper, um, deeper cuts into, uh, minimum parkings with affordability. It's basically, um, I think it's tied to the question about what the, the minimum threshold of units are. And I'm, I don't know if I really understand where this is, uh, coming from. Is it by increasing the minimum threshold to like 10? Does that mean that projects that are under 10 will still have parking minimum reductions? Despite maybe not having affordability requirements to the same level as large? Okay, okay. Well, I was mistaken and I'm in support. So yes, thumbs up from me.
I was muted. Commissioner Robson?
Thank you, Chair Keenan. Um, Claire Robson, I just wanted to thank, um, Commissioner Kirk for his question because I was under the same impression that he was. And so I'm really glad for that clarifying question. Thanks so much.
All right. Commissioner Westerback, did you wish to? No? Okay. So Senior Planner Boyd, do you think you have sufficient feedback on this? I think there's, support for raising the minimum, for reductions by right, but above a certain size, then requiring an affordability. I think that's where I heard a consensus and I'm seeing, nodding heads. So.
And we don't, we, we don't need a specific number. I think we, that gives us sort of some direction for further analysis and, and to come back, to you with, uh, some specific recommendations. So, thank you.
All right. Good. Uh, so you're next, uh, approach.
Uh, the next two questions have to do with the tiers approach. And, and the, the, the basic approach that we started with the, um, state mandated affordable housing, uh, um, parking reductions where we allow, uh, a first tier of reduction by right and, and, uh, additional, uh, reduction with, uh, parking study. And, and it, it might not be as simple as that, uh, in every situation, but, but, uh, is there support for that, uh, basic approach? Uh, so, uh, and, and it does get to the desire for deeper, parking reductions. If, if it can be justified through a parking study, if somebody comes in and says, we're going to give out bus passes to every tenant and do this and that and the other thing. And, and we're going to, uh, reduce our parking to, you know, point four, say, it just theoretically, um, uh, and then, and we're willing to, uh, provide whatever that, that affordability level i- is, uh, that, that we come up with, um, uh, relative to those reductions, we could, we can do that. So, so, just wanted confirmation that, uh, that, that, um, that approach, was, uh, supported and to, to kind of get into the nitty gritty, uh, details of how, how we do that in, in our code, uh, requirement.
So commissioner support? I saw at least one. I, I think we're good.
Okay. And then related to that is, uh, is there support for applying that also in those areas where we already have, uh, reduced parking requirements to some degree in downtown and Canyon Park? I think I know the answer to this.
Yes. So.
Okay.
See a consensus there?
Um, and then moving right along, uh, in downtown, uh, is there support for a return to the, point seven five, uh, space requirement for studios and one bedroom apartments?
Commissioners?
Okay. And that's the, that'll be the base level. And then we would allow, Okay, and that's the that'll be the base level and then we would allow further reductions as justified with parking study and affordability. Then on parking management, would you like us, and and this was something that came rather late in 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 the preparation for this meeting. So I haven't done a lot of analysis of this, but would you like us to explore a requirement for a parking management plan with with parking reductions again for most likely for those larger projects?
So I think you see a question from Commissioner Dodd first.
I was gonna say, I I I would be willing to explore that for sure, but definitely for large developments. I don't want to put a burden on small developments where we can see I have hope that we can see developers who want to add, you know, naturally affordable units and and all that stuff. I know large developments are more generally like for profits, a large for-profit things. I would I would want to see that for sure.
So so perhaps looking at the threshold we discussed earlier or something similar to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner what? Commissioner Augustin.
Sarah Augustin here. Thank you, Chair Kieran. I'm wondering where it might be appropriate to have a discussion here or encourage the council to discuss parking management options that do not involve police or court systems, given that these often can be harmful or unintentionally biased against low-income people or people of color. And I am I am awake at night thinking about this. I am losing sleep because I want the parking management, but I know there are issues with enforcement fairly and Carrie, help me so I can sleep. I'm sorry, Commissioner Westerbeck, help me so I can sleep on this. I I think we need some think about it really clearly if we're presenting it to the council. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, and I'll just say that that the type of parking management that we would be talking about in these requirements would be the private parking management. So it'd be developers managing the parking on their own property and and again, taking measures to reduce or spill over spill over parking and reduce residential tenants taking parking that is intended for business use, that that sort of thing. Not enforcement in terms of handing out tickets or.
And I heard data collection being a big part of that as well, if that's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, just to put Commissioner Augustin's mind at ease and maybe help her sleep a little bit better. As as Dave Boyd said, this is the enforcement in this case is private enforcement. So it's whatever the 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 management plan is for that particular project. So it may be, you know, cars parked in, you know, residents parked in business spots or residents parking in reserved spots that are not supposed to be parking in or people from the outside parking in spaces that are reserved for residents, that type of thing. But it's up to the property manager to to enforce that, the, you know, their provisions and to have the signage and and all of that. So where where the city comes into that is if it is part of the overall, if it's coordinated with the overall parking management plan for downtown, say, as we talked about earlier, then, you know, the data collection becomes important. There would be some sort of a reporting mechanism. And the city really doesn't have a way to require them to enforce at that point. And we've already run into this, frankly, with some of the downtown properties that we have. You know, we get complaints from residents about parking. And the parking is in those buildings and we have no authority, nor do we really have a desire to try to to try to enforce, you know, what's going on in on private property. So hopefully that may help you sleep a little bit better at night. It's 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 up to the property managers individually to deal with that.
So Senior Planner Boyd, do you have sufficient feedback to proceed on this one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And I think we have pretty good understanding for the last two items. One, the first one is coordinating these reductions with with the middle housing amendments. And like I said, we we're looking into bringing them back to you together in in April so that so that we can better manage that coordination. And the other one is just support for taking a look at the, when when we did the state mandated reductions, we basically said, we're not going to touch the parking reduction regulations from the date back to the nineties. We're going to leave those in place. We're not going to take away any entitlements. But as we're getting into this in a little more depth now, I think there are some areas where we could coordinate and integrate those better with 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 those state mandated requirements and whatever we come up with here. So I just wanted to make sure that there was support for for doing that.
I see.
I'm seeing lots of nods.
Nodding heads, no, no one leaping in to object, so.
Hopefully that's not nodding off.
We're early for us relatively. All right, so does that conclude the feedback you were seeking here?
I think that does, and and we're certainly open to other input, that other things that you want us to to look at.
So anyone else still like to have some closing comments?
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, we had no one in the attendee room to speak.
Thank you. I intended to ask that earlier, but.
I would have I would have mentioned it if we had.
We just kept rolling. Commissioner Westerbeck, your virtual hand is up. Oh, it went down.
No, no, I I was just taking it down to be efficient. Thank you, Chair Kieran. Yeah, I've got a few thoughts, like everybody expects me to, right? But I just want to call everyone's attention. I think Commissioner Dodd kind of alluded to earlier. We saw the IPCC report come out yesterday that said, basically, we don't, we we are almost out of time on climate change. And so I don't think it's too heavy-handed of us as a city to say and I know councils, a majority councils behind this idea too, that it's okay for us to start saying, hey, maybe we should discourage people from driving a little bit. And every time we put in parking spots and require all this parking, we're just saying, feel free to keep driving, go for it. And we really do have a ton of parking. There's parking spot anytime this person needs one. So if we stopped, just started winnowing down the amount of parking required, we're going to maybe see a little less driving and people make making other choices as we also have better transit, e-bikes. And we get a bike plan going that maybe makes it easier to move around the city in other ways. And we've got, you know, I say this every time, we've got a housing crisis. We really need to make it easy to build housing, not harder. And parking requirements make it hard and expensive. And as land goes up, I mean, I see this daily in my work. I can't believe it. I mean, it used to be you could make a single-family lot if if you're allowed to build into cemental housing on it. Maybe a few years ago, a triplex or duplex would pencil out, you know, to to at least break even, make a little bit of money for enough that a developer will build it. We're up to like fourplexes now. In Seattle, we're up to like six and seven. Like, you know, you can't tear down a million-dollar house in Seattle now and build four units unless they're going to be really expensive. So we're just we're just seeing, we're just chasing that affordability. And 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 by requiring expensive parking, we're just making that shoot up even faster. So I just want us to keep that in mind. It's really important. Most people are going to put in parking anyway, so we don't really have to 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 force them to do it. They're going to maybe maybe put a little less than they would have, but they're still going to put it in anyway in most cases unless it's right downtown. And again, there's a trend. I read about it constantly. Downtowns of all various sizes from small towns to cities all over the world, but especially in America, we're seeing it now too. Are getting rid of particularly downtown parking minimums because they realize it's it's a way to revitalize their downtown. And we're probably going to see that as a suggestion when we when we get a study studying the city with Urban Three and Joe Middaugh's firm that the council agreed to do a few months ago. That's going to happen eventually. And then finally, parking creates a lot of impervious surface and stormwater issues. I know City Bothell's had challenges with that. And council, as you've been talking about it a few months ago, I believe, and they were considering it a, you know, a big problem. And so, you know, all that parking, unless it's going to be expensive, below-grade, and structured parking stacked, which is the most expensive kind. All these all these parking spots just create lots of stormwater issues. So, you know, along with climate change, we're just making it worse. So just a few comments to keep in mind as we have this discussion. Appreciate the time.
Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you. I did want to circle back. I know we haven't had any attendees, but when this inevitably becomes a very hot ticket on YouTube with many views. I want to 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 just clarify, like, you know, growing up here, definitely a car culture, right? Like, my parents never owned bikes as a grown-up. So we, I took the bus until I could drive, and then I had a car and I drove a lot of places. And I still do. I'm doing this fun thing now where like I drove downtown for dinner, downtown Bothell for dinner on on Monday, and I got a spot right away. And I was like, yes. And I was like, I mean, you know, like, because I'm starting to learn, like, what does that mean when the parking is just fresh available, right? We maybe have too much parking and and that. And what does that speak to with our culture and everything? As as Carrie said, there was the report released recently and it was rather alarming. But I just want to clarify, as we talk about downtown Canyon Park, we're talking about neighborhoods that are meant to be incredibly dense to to do the work of of getting through this. But there's always, I'm sure, going to be places in Bothell where if you want to live there and you want to have your cars with lots of parking and room for guests, like, that will be an option. Like, I don't want anyone to, like I said, people are going to obviously watch this meeting later. And when they do, I don't want them to get concerned that there's just going to be no parking in Bothell and you're going to have to move to, you know, Everett to get parking or whatever it is. So just I just to frame it is what we're actually talking about, just to make sure that everybody's got that frame. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodd. And I would echo your experience as well. I've never had to walk more than a block or two downtown from parking. It's it's there. If you want to park directly in front of someplace, well, maybe not. But drive two blocks, it's there, it's available. Not that difficult. And I also want to circle back around again to the subsidized transit. And I I really think that as part of a, it should be encouraged as part of a building's transit management plan. And and it's not that difficult these days that when your rent goes in, you know, the first of the month, you then get fill in the blank number of dollars into your Orca card the fifth of the month. And if people have that, they'll start to use it. I mean, years ago, I worked downtown. When I started working downtown thirty-five years ago, I drove all the time. And you could find parking downtown back then too, by the way, free. But as the parking became more challenging and I got a bus pass as part of my job, in the latter years, I never drove. You know, it it does change your behavior. So having that resource, I think, is has a real value. So just a thought as we begin looking at the tools that we have to to change behaviors. So with that, I I do think we can close this study session then. Knowing that it's not anywhere near the last time we'll have an opportunity to talk parking, a subject near and dear to so many's hearts. So so thank you, Senior Planner Boyd, for walking us through a very stimulating conversation, and I hope you got what you needed from it.
I did. Thank you.
All right, great. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, unfinished business. Director Coteman, do we have any unfinished business?
I do not believe so, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Reports from staff. Nothing?
Actually, yes, I've thought of a few things. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Commissioner Westerbeck just mentioned the Urban Three study. I just wanted to let you know that the we do have the contract signed on that. And we have a kickoff meeting scheduled, I believe, next week or the week after. So that project will be getting started. There's a couple of items going to council I wanted to make you aware of. One is ratification of the King County Countywide Planning Policies, or CPPs for short. This is part of the process in King County as it goes through a ratification process by all the jurisdictions in the county. And staff thought this would be a good opportunity to have the council weigh in on those and and also get a briefing on what's in those CPPs. So we don't have anything scheduled right now for the planning commission on that because you don't have a role in this ratification process. But we will we'll schedule some time to bring that briefing to you so you'll have a better understanding of what's in the King County CPPs and we'll do something similar then for Snohomish County CPPs as well, since all of those will inform what we need to do as far as our comp plan update. So that'll be coming to you at some point. The city council next week is conducting interviews for the board and commission members. This is probably best characterized as speed dating for those. You've all been through the process, so you know what what that entails. The interviews will be on the eighth, then they'll be making the appointments the following Tuesday on the fifteenth. Which for the planning commission means we'll have our new commissioner appointed the night before our next meeting. We will certainly invite the person to that meeting. I think this happened with Commissioner Dodd a couple of years ago. And she actually made the meeting, as I recall. So we will be inviting the person to that first, that next meeting in March. Whether or not they're able to make it, I don't know. But we'll we'll certainly do that. As far as the city manager process goes, the council will also be winnowing down to semifinalists doing interviews on the seventeenth of this month, this month already being March. And then final interviews of the finalists will be on April fifth. So that's coming up. The other item that's coming to the council that I wanted to make you aware of is on April twelfth, we will be doing a briefing as part of the study session for the city council on the comp plan update. We had some discussion with the council about that when we had the docket discussion a couple of weeks ago. This will be a really more of a focus on what's the overall effort that's going to be required. There'll be some discussion of additional budget and resources that will be needed for that, staffing as well as consultant resources. We're not going to have, it's not a budget request at that time, but just to let the council know the the scope of of the effort that will be required. And it's not just community development, but the Public Works Transportation Group is also a part of that. Because that's another big piece of this. And and if you watched the council meeting last night, you heard several references by Steve Morikawa talking about the TIP and the Capital Facilities Plan and how much of that is really built off of what's in the comprehensive plan and the project list that's there. So this will be a more or less continuation of that of that discussion. But I think it would be good information for the commission as well if you have a chance to to watch that meeting. And again, you know, we can repeat that briefing for the the commission as well. Last night, I sent you the the approved version of the docket. Hopefully you will receive that. If you did not, please let me know. That was also sent to the city council for their information and reference. And I always forget something. Just a reminder, City Hall is reopening to the public on Tuesday, March fifteenth, two weeks from yesterday. We'll be open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of every week from eight until five. That will also be the times that the counters are open, customer service and permit counters. So we will have staff available. We will also be available for appointments on Mondays and Fridays. If if anyone, you know, needs to schedule another time. So we're trying to be flexible and serve the public. You know, in as we as we need to, as as we are want to. We'll we'll try out this schedule and see how it works for a while, and then we'll adjust as time goes on. As I've told my staff, you need to be patient with ourselves and with each other. This is, we're going to be learning and figuring some of this out as as we come back into the building and and start to get back to whatever our new sense of semi abnormal is. And I see a question, but I believe that's all I can think of right now, Mr. Chair. I'm sure I've forgotten something as usual.
All right, Commissioner Dodd, did you have a question?
Yeah, it was about City Hall reopening. I guess where where did we land on in-person meetings or the option to be in person? And then has that changed at all since there's been a lot of state guidance recently?
Thank you for that question. That is, that's one of the things I knew I would forget to to mention. So the the council has not yet decided when they're coming back. Staff is doing another test this week of the hybrid system that's been set up for that. Because when we do come back, it'll be hybrid meetings. So there will be in-person as well as the ability, particularly for the public, to participate virtually as they do now. So we've got some training that we have to do to make sure that we can do that. What I've what I've mentioned to the commission in the past is my my plan, my expectation is that we would wait about a month until after the, when, once the council comes back in person, then we would follow that about a month later with the planning commission and the other boards and commissions that we staff. That gives us time to make sure all the bugs get worked out. There is no date at this time. The council has not not made that decision. That gives us time to make sure all the bugs get worked out. There is no date at this time. Uh, the council has not, uh, not made that decision. But I would like to know, a question for the, for the commission, and you don't have to answer this this evening, but something to think about. Would you? How many of you would want to be in person when we do come back in those hybrid meetings? And would you want to have the ability to participate? Uh, remotely? You know, it's, it's your call. Um, I can tell you what my preference is, but it's really up to you. So I will tell you that my, my requirement will be for any staff that are presenting, unless there are extenuating circumstances that they will be present in the council chambers for those meetings.
Do I see Senior Planner Boyd wanting to add something?
Oh, and not, not on that topic. So why don't you go ahead and get any feedback on, on the meeting, uh, in person?
It, it, if you want to think about it, and you know, we can talk about it at the next meeting, there's no rush on it. So maybe we'll just, we'll let you contemplate that. Ponder it for a couple of weeks and we'll talk about it on the sixteenth.
Yeah, let's give it a few minutes in the next meeting.
Yep. So we'll, we'll let, we'll let Dave offer his rebuttal to anything that I've, I've said.
No rebuttal. It's just, and I wasn't even thinking of, of, uh, uh, adding this in staff reports until a couple of the commissioners talked about, uh, driving downtown and, and parking a block or two away in market. Uh, and, uh, you hear about some of the big projects that, that we work on, uh, like the Bothell Way project. Uh, you don't often hear about some of the smaller ones, uh, and uh, one of the tasks I had this week was sitting in on a review meeting for improvements to a hundred and second, uh, avenue, uh, between, uh, the bridge and a hundred and eighty-fifth. And it's funded by transit money to help people get from essentially from Main Street or from the Park and Ride up to the new, uh, bus, uh, street on one eighty-fifth. Um, uh, but, and we're looking at ways to make that um, uh, more pedestrian friendly. We have a couple of blocks where we had new development, the Merck and the addition apartments did the improvements on their blocks, uh, but, uh, maybe quite some time before some of those other ones uh, redevelop and, and, and do their own frontage improvements. So this is going to be an, uh, opportunity to make, uh, improvements, uh, bulb outs to reduce pedestrian crossings, uh, more street trees, more, uh, pedestrian, uh, scale lighting, uh, that sort of thing. So uh, that's all part of this whole, the whole picture of, uh, parking and, and being able to walk safely and comfortably between, uh, that place that might be a couple of blocks away, uh, and, and your destination.
Well, thank you. Good to hear. So I believe that concludes reports from staff. Uh, Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Quick question. Is the city council still planning to livestream boarding commissions interviews? Because I'm not getting interviewed this time, but I feel it's a little bit awkward to have people watching your interview, especially if they go after you and then I, I don't know. It, it is a, a little bit of a strange situation. So I'm wondering if there's any way the council might um, want to stop the livestream if possible, especially to make it easier for people who might not have ever been on a city platform before. It can be really intimidating.
Uh, that's a very good question, Commissioner Gustafson. I don't know the answer to that. Um, I would, I'd suggest that you contact the city clerk about that and she can tell you if that, if they're doing that this year. Um, I know that came up. Was it last year, two years ago, when, when we had interviews? Um, but I haven't, actually haven't heard that brought up this year. I'm assuming they're still doing that, but I don't know for sure. But, uh, but feel free to call or contact her via email and ask her the question and also, you know, um, register your concerns with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it accidental last year?
Was it?
I did the interview for last year and, and I jumped in and I, I got to watch, but I had to be let in. I thought it's maybe a panelist or something, but maybe I, maybe I was, maybe I was just wrong. Maybe everybody could watch the whole time. You know, do you know the case, that, that was the case?
I believe, I believe it was. Yeah, I believe it was livestreamed and everybody could watch it.
I was just unaware.
Yeah. Okay. You didn't know you were on candid camera, did you?
Well, I know I, um, yeah, no, you're right. I didn't, I didn't. I thought it was private except for those who were interviewing. So news to me. Thanks for letting me.
Yeah, I believe it was livestreamed.
Commissioner Dodd?
I was going to say, I, I do have an interview and I already talk about planning all the time publicly, so I guess that's not much different, but, um, yikes, definitely agree with all your points, Commissioner Gustafson. So I'm wondering, um, if you are for sure going to email the clerk, then maybe the response could go to all of us. So I, she's not getting a bunch of emails about the same thing, is that?
If you, if you want me to, I will check with the clerk and I will forward that information to the commission.
Sorry to give you a task. I just
That's, that's quite all right. So the question is whether the interviews are being livestreamed.
Yeah, and I, the, the WebEx, um, or WebEx, wow, the Zoom, um, panel stuff, I understand that it would be crazy to try and keep people out in like a meeting room and let them like, I get that, you know, I'm not worried about the other applicants seeing my interview, like I, it just the times we're in, but livestreamed on and, and then forever on YouTube. Um, is odd. And again, very different from previous interviews before last year. So
And, and I, and, and I'm, I probably shouldn't answer this because I don't recall exactly how this was done before. Uh, in, in, you know, to BC, to, to, you know, before COVID BC, um. But I believe those interviews and maybe Commissioner Kieran and you were part of that or Commissioner Curd have been on a little bit longer. I believe those were conducted live and in person and the public was allowed to sit in on those. So I, I think, no.
So I had one of those in twenty twenty, there was no public and they weren't recorded because I remember Councilmember Duer couldn't attend the interview session. So she refrained from voting on the appointments because she couldn't go to the interviews. And I think that's fair. So, um, it's fun historical side note. So yeah, it's them being accessible forever is, is, was just for, you know, pandemic interviews thus far.
Yeah, they were in person. I, I don't, there were no members of the public. Um, boy, you, you reaching back four years now for me and I believe we were waiting outside and then invited into the room and interviewed. Sound familiar, Commissioner Curd?
Yeah, the council had previously, um, in their protocol manual suspended, um, uh, I guess, just whatever rule was restricting everything from being, um, livestreamed and everything. And it was kind of an executive session almost. It was just a kind of a small group interview.
Let me look into it, because I, I recall there was debate about it. Um, that, you know, there was some debate about whether or not it was ness, where it was, whether it was required. And if it, if it, even if it wasn't required, did the council want to do it? So, and so that the public could, could view that. And there was some feeling that, you know, it, it should be public because these are public appointments to public bodies, but I don't recall exactly how that all got worked out in the end. So I will, I'll contact the clerk tomorrow and get some information on that and share that with the rest of the commission.
And I also
But I will ask, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I was going to say, I also wonder if there are enough council members participating that it qualifies as an op, um, public meeting, subject to the Op, Op Meetings Act.
It, yes, it does. There are exceptions to the OPMA and I don't know if this would be considered an exception. Personnel matters, for example, are an exception to the OPMA. You can do those in exact session. I don't know if this qualifies. Uh, that's a legal question. So I'm, I'll, I'll talk to the clerk. I may have to talk to the city attorney's office as well. But I, I was going to say, I, but I would, I will ask the question. I will get you that information. But if you do have specific concerns about it, I would ask that you convey those to the, to the clerk. Um, that's really more appropriate coming from, uh, from the people who are experiencing that as opposed to staff.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Um, I would maybe recommend that if we as a group have concerns about this, that we might want to send a note jointly to the council because I don't believe our city clerk has the authority to make decisions on this. Um, maybe we could
She doesn't. And, and at this point, the council wouldn't be able to do that either.
Okay, yeah.
They would have had to do that.
Okay.
Already.
Right.
So I don't know that it'll affect anything this year.
Right.
Sorry.
That's, that makes sense. And maybe a majority of other um, boards and commissions might weigh in, because maybe people like having it public. I don't know, just based on, but my experience was.
All right. I think that concludes reports from staff.
The thing, I didn't have anything to share tonight.
Yeah. Reports from members. I believe there are a few meetings in the past, since our last meeting, that folks might want to comment on. Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you, Commissioner Westerbeck here. Um, yep, as Dave, uh, mentioned, uh, Dave Boyd mentioned earlier, um, BOPOP, not in my role as a planning commissioner in any way, um, I, I formed BOPOP years ago. We, we all know about that. Anyway, we had a, um, a presentation for about an hour, um. Was it the seventeenth of February, February? And it was, um, called the State of Housing in Bothell and, uh, Mr. Boyd, uh, was nice enough to give us five minute, a few minutes of his time and some great slides showing us what the city was doing. Some of the stuff we have, stuff we all know about as planning commission. We also had Mayor Thompson speak for a few minutes about, um, as a private citizen really, um, about his thoughts on housing in Bothell. Cause he wasn't representing council in that way. And then also, uh, the main presentation was from Housing Development Consortium. Um, with support from, um, North Urban Human Services Alliance. And they have this housing snapshot presentation. That was about twenty minutes talking about, um, the data on Bothell and, um, the, uh, the need for housing, what things cost, typical rents, what the issue is, kind of a, a, a global look at, uh, housing affordability of Bothell and as it relates to the country. It's a good presentation. It was really useful. And the whole idea was to really do it for people who aren't planning commissioners and, and, and planning wonks. And so that was, that was the goal. And we had about, um, I think thirty-six people, um, plus the presenters. Um, and the hosts. So I think we had, oh, I think over forty-something, uh, as I checked, which is not bad. Um, and so, uh, that went really well. Um, and we also did some breakout rooms and had people talk about like their housing story. And, and even though we didn't have much time for those, um, uh, each, each person who facilitated, uh, sent some notes to, uh, Kristen Joyner, who was, who was, uh, the host of the meeting for us. And there were, there were four or five different stories of people who were housing insecure in Bothell, who, who came to the session just to learn more about, you know, what was being done. So that was really interesting that we, we had some people who were concerned about their housing, who were attending. So anyway. And then, um, I did want to ask, and I'll say, I, I went to the, um, the presentation on missing metal housing with Karen Perolick that you suggested. And I know other people, you know, in the advocacy world were suggesting that too. It's probably the best presentation I've ever seen on missing metal. And it makes sense because Karen and her husband, um, Dan coined the term missing metal. But did anyone else, just curious, did anyone else attend that? Dave, you, you did? Cool. And I don't know, I, I haven't been sent anything that says we can watch the, um, watch it again or get notes, but boy, if it was, if there was a way to do that, I would encourage people to watch it.
I'll, I did receive that because I wasn't able to attend. That was actually on a, on a flight home, but, uh, I will forward that. I, I don't know if it'll work.
Okay.
It should work. You should have received that, but I can ask.
I wonder if I got it and went to spam or something, um.
It's time limited. I can't remember how long it's available af, following, but, uh, I, I also got it. Uh, I, I didn't attend live. I, I had another, uh, had a conflict, but I did watch it.
Cool. I, um, I thought it was really, really great. Obviously, you know, they've been working on it for years, the information and the data, everything is really compelling. So, um, and it was, it was really, really worth the time. So those are the only two things I had. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Robson, then Commissioner Curd.
I was just wondering if, um, Director Cotterman or, um, somebody could send me the link for, uh, that presentation as well. I signed up for it and wasn't able to go and I, like Carrie, I didn't get to receive the email. So I was just wondering if you guys, you come across that email, if it sounded to me as well. I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Curd.
Thank you. Yeah, I, um, I concur. Same. I was unable to make it, but, um, the thing I wanted to talk about was also a meeting that happened on the seventeenth. And I know that, uh, Commissioner Gustafson was there because I saw her questions come through the chat. Uh, but, um, it was the Bothell Way widening, uh, discussion that was hosted by the city of Bothell in conjunction with some consultants. Um, so just, I'll condense it into three takeaways and then then ask. The first takeaway is that, um, okay, we're, we're widening the road finally. Uh, we all know that it's sort of a death trap for active transportation and all the gaps in sidewalks and, uh, shoulders and, um, even in, uh, road, um, uh, you know, view, uh, angles and so, so forth. Um, there's like a rockery that's falling down. We all know that it, it needs some work. So um, the project is aimed towards, uh, improving, um, habitat for Horse Creek a little bit too. We have some undersized culverts that are going to be repaired, which, um, wouldn't probably be funded if not for the roadway project that the city is undertaking. So that's exciting. The second, um, takeaway is that, wow, there are a lot of crashes on this corridor. Um, I think we all know implicitly that we wouldn't want our, um, you know, young children or even and, you know, in the, in the nighttime or the even early uh, to mid afternoons in the winter, we wouldn't be wanting to walk on the shoulder there, but it happens. Um, there's a lot of pedestrian, um, and vehicle collisions. There's also vehicle on vehicle collisions and um, bicyclist collisions as well in that corridor. And so this project is aimed towards, um, mitigating and reducing that risk. The third takeaway is that, uh, it's really expensive. And, um, rightly so, uh, we don't widen every road, uh, hopefully. So, um, in order to, um, do this the right way, it's going to be phased. And the phases will be like one and three, uh, or one and two, phases one and two will be um, down towards, uh, Reader Way and Downtown was the first kind of phase. The second phase is up near, um, uh, Safeway at, uh, two fortieth and down a little bit. And then the third phase is the windy fun section between, um, between the two. Uh, and so, uh, because it's a phase approach, the city is targeting, uh, phases one and two, which are at the extremities of the project for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven construction, uh, and then phase three, which is the kind of critical piece that doesn't have uh, a whole lot of infrastructure. They don't have a date on that yet and it could be later than twenty twenty-nine, which is uh, something to think about there. Uh, the ask is that, uh, keep this in your minds going forward. If you weren't able to make the first meeting, there's always more. Um, and the next one that I know about is on March twenty-third. I think I heard them talking about another thing, but I haven't seen anything come through yet. We're still a ways off, but, uh, keep an eye out and I will forward information I receive, um, to you all, um, when I get it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Curd. I know we'd all look forward to receiving that information. So thanks. Other, uh, reports from members. Commissioner Gustafson.
Hey, Sarah Gustafson here. I wanted to report on a really exciting affordable housing project that is happening in Kenmore. And I think we've had a lot of conversation today about encouraging and affordable housing through mandates or incentives. And there are a lot of folks who believe that the only surefire way to create it is for the cities and localities to build it. And, uh, Kenmore has actually taken a really important step towards doing this. They have a half acre piece of land in their downtown, which is worth about one point eight million dollars. And they're combining that with three point four million dollars of ARPA funds. And adding in another three million dollars of arch funds. So this project's worth about eight million. And taking that money and offering it to affordable housing developers who would then take that space and create maybe eighty to a hundred units, um, between thirty and fifty percent of AMI. And thank you for sharing the screen. I wanted to, um, show this pin, which is the actual location um, of the city-owned property. And, um, I learned about this through Councilmember Karina File and the assistant manager Stephanie Luke-Hatch, who I met at the Missing Middle Walk, so So thank you, Cars, and thank you, Commissioner Curd, for that. Then again, but it's really inspiring. The location is incredible. It's close to the Safeway on the other side of sixty eighth. It's close to the library. It's close to transit. If you go a little further north, it's close to the urgent care. It's fabulous and I I wish we could have this happen in Bothell. We don't have land or money in that amount, but it is inspiring to figure out what other cities can do. And hopefully we'll hear more from from Kenmore because they say they have more properties to develop.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gustafson. Other Commissioner updates, reports. Seeing none, we did add a new item to tonight's agenda, recognizing that the council has an item on their agenda for reports from commission. Giving us time to discuss anything we might want to report out to council from this body. Anything folks would like to discuss, or do you just want to bookmark that we do make this time? And it is an opportunity for Planning Commission to make its feelings known to council. Commissioner Curd.
Thanks. We could say a lot about sort of the deliberations that we're having, but I think one thing that we all probably share, I feel strongly about this, is during the interview process, we're new commissioners and also just boards too. Especially for boards that don't get a lot of like public interaction, it can be really overwhelming to be on like a livestream where there interviews. And so I I feel strongly that we should bring this up collectively. And maybe this is a good outlet for us to air that little grievance. Instead of like writing a letter or all of us sending emails to to everybody, I think maybe this would be a good point for us to share our opinion. And that's certainly my opinion. Sounds like it might be shared a little bit too.
Okay, so I wrote down perhaps oversimplifying, but let me see if this captures it, that there is a concern that the current interview process may be a barrier to participation. Okay.
Mr. Chair, a question?
Yes.
I know you had a meeting with with Mayor Thompson. Is that going to be a regular occurrence? Do you know?
I believe that was a one off.
Okay.
He he certainly indicated availability. And that that's a channel that that we could use as well.
I was just wondering if it was more of a regular occurrence that that would be an opportunity to to share with with him the concerns that the commission has expressed.
Yeah, as far as, there is nothing currently scheduled. I think as his newly assuming the position of mayor, he wanted to reach out to the chairs of various boards and commissions to just get to know us all a little better and to share what his thoughts are on how he would like to interact with the boards and commissions. So sure, making a long answer short, no, that's not coming up as an opportunity to to voice this. Although I could reach out to Mayor Thompson specifically on that. Are there any other thoughts on this? Commissioner Dodd.
I do like the idea of using that time, just to feedback as a board if we can do a quick hand raise to make sure that that is our board feedback from everybody. If Chair, you're comfortable taking that up with the council in that allotted time.
I can take it up or another commissioner could as well. I'm certainly willing to be the voice of the commission as the chair. But if someone else wants that, I would defer to them as well. So I guess the first question is, is is that the sense of this body? That there is a concern that the interview process consisting of live streaming those interviews may be a barrier to participation? All right, I see everyone saying yes. And then the next question would be, does anyone else want to present that or do you want me to? I'm not seeing anyone leaping forward. I'm not surprised. I just felt compelled to ask. So when is the next meeting, Director Cotterman?
The next council meeting?
Yes.
I don't believe there, next week is the interviews and they're narrowing down the semifinalists for the city manager position. So I I don't think they have this item on the agenda. That they have a standing item on the agenda now, which is reports from boards and commissions. So I don't believe this is going to be on that one, so it'd probably be the fifteenth.
Okay, would you confirm that with me if you could? And then I gotta say, looking at my schedule, I've got Sounders tickets that night, the fifteenth.
This this month, they're also meeting on the twenty second.
On the eighth. I mean, on the eighth, I've got tickets. So if they are meeting the eighth, I can't make it.
Oh, okay.
On the fifteenth, I I could be available.
Okay, yeah, they're they're they actually have an extra meeting this month. So they're the fifteenth and the twenty second would be the next two possibilities. I will confirm that with the clerk and and get back to you.
Okay, thanks. And the twenty second, I did plan to be away that week since we don't have a commission meeting. So I might reach out to someone else if the twenty second is our window. So let me know what their availability is.
Okay.
Certainly the fifteenth, I'll I'll be all in. Other than that, I may probe around to see if there's someone else interested. And it will be a short statement. I, you know, what I heard was the concern for the process presenting a barrier. I wouldn't be surprised if they asked some questions, which I think I've got a good enough sense for the feelings of the commissioners on this. But I can respond to that and then I'll let you know. All right, so that was one item to report to council on our new agenda item. Keep in mind that this is here. And should the commission feel an interest in sending feedback forward, I'm glad to carry it. And as I said, if someone else wants to be a representative, it wouldn't hurt my feeling either. So all right, seeing no other items, no further business for us. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Dodd.
To adjourn the meeting.
And Commissioner Gustafson, I saw your hand up rather quickly. All right.
A second.
All right. Any discussion or all in favor? All right, seeing no, seeing no discussion and general consensus on adjourning. I adjourn the March second meeting of the Planet Commission at eight twenty one this evening. Thank you all for your participation. Good night.
Good to see everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
See you soon.
Night.
Good night.